All right, I'm late.
I think we're good to go, Brian.
All right, welcome to the Bellingham Zoning Board of Appeals, May 6th, the meeting, 2021. The first item on the agenda is for a variance for 206 Mechanic Street. I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
I'll read the public hearing notice real quick.
Sure.
The Bellingham Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on May 6th, 2021, at 7:00 PM remotely via the Zoom online option for the request of a use variance, Section 24012B to the use schedule, Section 240-31, Section 240-61E1, which is parking area, design, and location, as well as a variance for to the intensity of use schedule, Section 240-40, to allow for warehouse distribution use within a B1 zone that would otherwise not be allowed, as well as to allow for the maximum building height to exceed that what would otherwise be allowed in a B1 zone at the property of 206 Mechanic Street, Bellingham, Mass., assesses map 52 lot 3. This property is zoned industrial and business one. Applicant is, sorry, Howland Development, Wayne Finnegan, 155 West Street, Wilmington, Mass., 01887. And owner is BAS Realty Trust, Edward and Judith Moore, trustees, 6 Blackstone Street, Bellingham, Mass. Application may be viewed at the town clerk's office to Mechanic Street during regular town hall business hours or at or online at bellinghamma.org zoning board page, and it wish to be heard shall attend at the time and place above. Brian, if you don't mind, I give you guys kind of a high level overview of what this, what the heck all that just meant. And and then and then I know the applicant's here, and I'm sure he can go into greater detail. But so what you have in your package today is the narrative with with the responses to, you know, you're the patented with the three issues of what the variance requests are. Your application and a plan in place. So you should have all of that in your Dropbox packet tonight. Specifically, what the requests are here is, you guys know the location. It's Maple 140, the corner there, the old Hudson location. You can't miss it. And and this property, you know, has a has a long history here. The zoning at this location is business one at the very corner of the property and industrial to the, if you're looking at it from Mechanic Street to the left and all the way to the back. And so the request here is to to not only utilize the industrial zone, and I'll remind you, it's industrial zone plus 30. Our zoning bylaws gives a little bit of grace to 30 extra feet. And then into and then eating into the business zone as well. You know, it's, it's a unique thing to our bylaws that you can't put a warehouse in a business zone, but that's how that's how it reads. So that a use is a use variance is required if they are to move that building into the business zone. In addition, the height of the building, as as I'm sure the applicant's going to discuss, but you guys all know the history in town. Many of these industrial buildings rise to, you know, 40 feet in height, 41, 42 sometimes. And in a business zone, it's only allowed to go up to 35 feet. So the request is to exceed that 35 feet. And I know I've already had some early discussions with the applicant. So I think he's going to be addressing some of those issues specifically in terms of height. And then lastly, it's the location of the driveway. So the location of the driveway is if you're, if you're orienting yourself and you're looking at the property from Mechanic Street, to the left of that is the Lindemire Building. And that Lindemire Building is kind of close, that warehouse is kind of close to the Mechanic Street. Well, their their driveway is actually on the far side to the right, which butts up against this property. And so that that puts this property into have some concern. So basically, the driveway is technically too close in accordance with our bylaws. So those are three specific variances that are being requested tonight. And just to go over kind of the process too. So, you know, this board tonight, even if you said absolutely to all three of these, you're not granting a warehouse development. What you're granting is the opportunity for the applicant to come before the planning board next for, you know, what would be if it stays this concept? A special permit as well as a development plan, stormwater management permit, and maybe some others, as well as a notice of intent from conservation. So tonight, it's really discussing these three variances in relation to moving from the industrial zone to the business one zone. And I think the applicant will certainly be able to describe to you essentially why he's requesting this.
Okay, Jim, just one question. Did you go over, you were saying about the 30 foot kind of rules? Does that mean that where they have the line between industrial and business that they're allowed more or less 30 feet, they could kind of encroach on either side?
Exactly right. So it gives, our zoning bylaws give kind of a grace. So you can butt right up to that property line or that zoning line and then 30 feet over. So this is, this comes into play quite often because we have a lot of split zone parcels in town. So, yeah, we've seen this fairly regularly. And it's kind of, and most of the time it acts just like this. It's similar uses, so industrial with business zone. You'll see a lot of residential and suburban zone kind of join together. Sometimes agricultural zone plays plays a role. So, you know, for example, across the street, actually, when we did the apartment complex permitting, they actually had agriculture in the rear, and we allowed for them to go those 30 feet into that cultural zone and put their their parking and et cetera back there. So, so, yeah, so there is, there is that grace period there at 30 extra feet.
Okay. And the applicant then is Wayne Finnegan is speaking on behalf of the applicant?
So Wayne is the developer and John from Bowler, I believe, will be presenting this evening.
Okay. Is he on?
Yes, yep, we are on.
Hi, hi, John.
How are you?
Good. Do you want to, I guess, like Jim was saying, do you want to kind of walk us through kind of the development of the plan and?
Absolutely, absolutely. And if I could share my screen, I can show you some graphics and hopefully make this go a little, a little smoother and easier to to follow.
Yeah, you should be able to now, John.
Perfect, perfect. Jim did a great job of doing the, doing the overview. It's really high level, exactly what we're, what we're looking to do. Y'all are familiar with the, with the property. Bear with me, let me share screens here. Okay, did that? Seeing my screen?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, perfect. So that's the property that we're looking at. It's it's highlighted in in red here. It's about 10, 10 acres, you know, contains some, some structures scattered throughout the property, cleared out areas, some parking, a lot of that back area was cleared. You can't see all of it based on the fence that there, but some of that back area was cleared out. And it was really the old Hudson facility was a bunch of cars stored stored back there. What we are looking to do is construct 124,000 plus or minus square foot warehouse distribution facility. And to get to this point, we've been at this for a couple of months now. We've had multiple conversations with staff and different folks within the, within the, within the town. We really wanted to get any comments upfront from the this middle prior to coming before you. So we've got a bunch.
Could I just ask, just a quick question?
Sure.
Um, so I think Jim said to me, just for scale, it's about half the size of the Lindemire. Is that about right?
Yeah, yeah, I'll show you a plan in a moment, but that's, that's about right. It's about half the size. And it's even smaller than the new one that was just built by, I think, Lincoln Properties, one, one, one building up. So it's much smaller in scale than than the existing structures that are that are there.
Right, yeah, thanks, go ahead.
Yep, absolutely. So again, we've had a whole bunch of conversations. We really wanted to understand what some of the hot buttons might be and what we could do to really make this as good of a project as as we could. So we're happy about that. We've incorporated everything into the plan. And what we have before you is this plan essentially right here. Did that flip over when I clicked it?
Yep.
Great. Perfect. So the, really, this shows an aerial underneath, and then the proposed plan rendered rendered up on top. Again, Maple Street is to the bottom of the sheet sheet here, Mechanic Street to the left, and that is the Lindemire Building. So to your question, you can kind of see I cut it off, but you get to see how much bigger that is. It actually goes, it's much deeper, deeper building. It's an odd shaped lot. When you look at it, you've got this triangular piece that juts out in the back, which is a little bit odd. So it takes up a good portion of the of the development of the property and really kind of forces us to build the facility in this area here. We placed the building parallel to Maple Street. It's a long end here, short end located this way. One important component with the current layout is we've placed the loading aspect of the facility here. And we think, and this really came from some of our earlier conversations, the initial plans, we had the building flipped and kind of pushed back into the site. And then we're presenting this with with Jim and staff. They just didn't like the fact that the trucks would be the prominent view from the, from the intersection, which is a great comment. We agree. So we flipped the building and moved it. And that's really what one of the the variances were requesting for use because we shifted the building to flip the, flip the docks to be on the side. So I'll get into that a little bit later, but that's a big part of what drove this current layout. I think the benefit of having the trucks to the to the rear. So having the loading there, as you can see, it's fully screened from the intersection. You'd be looking at the building and the landscaping. This area would be fully, fully screened.
So can I just ask a quick question, John? So your original concept had the building fully within the industrial?
Yeah, we were, we're looking at flipping the building the other way, pushing it back a little bit.
I mean, I think that this is definitely preferred. I just curious that the original was fully within the industrial.
That is correct. That is correct. And that's why I mentioned, we really wanted to meet with staff early on. We find you just frankly, you get a better product when you understand what's important to some folks and really what some of the hot buttons might be. And that came up pretty, pretty early on as a as a comment. So, you know, luckily, it was a change we're able to make. And frankly, we agree with you. We think it's a much better plan this way. Beyond that, we have the, essentially, the employee parking here. Again, keeping with the same context, you know, it was brought up that would be important to do what we can to really screen that as well, even though that's not the intensive portion of the use. We still, we provided the 45 foot green space located in this area. And it's kind of hard to tell from this plan, but those dash lines represent an earth and burn. So we're essentially going to create a berm here and put some landscaping on top of this to really further buffer certainly the parking and then take away from the, from the, from the building as well. Additionally, we're placing the building approximately 70 feet back from from the right away line. To put that in context, your setback line is 20 feet. So we could be, you know, by right, much, much closer. We didn't want to do that because this allows us a couple of things. You know, number one, it allows us this this great landscape strip in here. So we're able to to do more plantings and create more buffering. Set it back a little bit further from the intersection. It just takes, it just gives you a much better view from the, from the intersection. To put it in perspective, you can see this corner of the building up here. They're much closer, you know, really, they were probably at that 20 foot setback. We wanted to be back much further. Also, when we had started having these conversations, it was brought to our attention. And I live in the area, so I'm very familiar with it. But it was brought to our attention that this really is a focal point as you're, as you're coming into Bellingham from Franklin. You've got that newly reconstructed intersection. That's really where you, where you enter Bellingham. And it was brought up, it would be really good to have some sort of a, the feature to really show that. Jim had suggested that we have a a wall structure. So this is a kind of a superimposed wall, but this is a stone wall with the welcoming, welcome to Bellingham sign on it. It has some shrubbery to the front and some low lying, you know, flowers and ground covering here with some specimen trees to the to the rear. So we think adding something like that to the front of the site would be, would be just really a great way to come, come into town. So essentially, this right here would be located right in here. That's what this represents. It's kind of hard to see at this scale, but you've got the lower lying grass in front of it, the wall behind it, and some of those specimen trees right there. So we think that's a really nice touch as you're coming in. And really, that's what you're, you're seeing at that that corner of the, the building. Couple of other things that were important were the driveway locations and the circulation of the of the site. As Jim had mentioned, we have driveways and we have a couple of variances associated with with the driveway here. But we located driveways far away from the intersection as possible, both on Mechanic Street here and on Maple Street here. It's really engineering 101, right? You want to get as far away from the intersection as possible, which is, which is what we've done. And that provides, I think, a really good circulation pattern as well. Essentially, all of the trucks would would come in from from Mechanic Street and enter the the site at a counterclock, excuse me, at a clockwise orientation. And then from here, there was concern, staff didn't want trucks coming, coming out this direction, right? It's kind of a tough move, taking a left turn out at the mechanic, which is much busier than than Maple. So all trucks would be directed out onto Maple. However, from here, they would be restricted to a right out only. We would not allow any of the trucks to take a left out. Another be concerned, we don't want trucks going down Maple Street and heading in that direction. If they came out here, they would come onto Maple and then be able to take that left hand turn heading into Franklin at the 140 interchange, 495 at 140, which really is the is the closest spot to go to, and it makes the most sense. It really pulls all of the traffic that would be associated with this away from, you know, Maple Street and towards the 140 intersection, which we think makes a lot of sense. So, as mentioned above, we've really reviewed this closely with staff. We've had a few meetings with the different members within, within the community. And we've incorporated these, these changes. As I mentioned earlier, it is a unique site, and really, that's why we're here tonight, seeking a few, a few variances to to get into those a little bit more. And I've kind of touched upon those, you know, the first is is the use variance. Again, this being the zone line and then the added benefit you get of the 30 feet. We, you know, the use is allowed industrial, but it's not allowed in in business. So we are requesting the variance for for use, which allows us to propose what we think is the, is the better plan. When you look at that, you know, beyond just the confines of of this parcel, I think it's very interesting as well. I know the graphic I'd like to, like to share. This is a blown up aerial exhibit, again, in red. That is, that is our parcel, same orientation. Maple Street is here, Mechanic Street is here. But what you'll see is everything on the north or the right side of Mechanic Street. It's all industrial. This is the new Lincoln Properties site they put in. This is Lindemire, another site here. It's all zoned industrial and built industrial. And as you continue into Franklin, which you can't see, that's the the town line there. You've got Corellic Farms, and it continues with that use. It really is very odd that you had that small sliver of business land right, right here. So it's very consistent with the existing properties in the, in the, in the use. I had heard that once upon a time that was rezoned. So so essentially, some of the cars could be sold there. I don't know if that's true or not, but regardless, it really doesn't make sense. It's really more consistent to be in that industrial use, which is prominent in that that corridor there. Second variance is for building height. As as Jim had mentioned, industrial has one height, business has has another. So we would like the the business height to to hold. I think the the proposed building would be right around that that 40 foot mark as, as was mentioned. That's what's really needed for the clear height within the building of these industrial sites. To that end, you know, we've also thought about this just to make sure that wouldn't be a problem and would fit in. Again, it's very consistent with the heights of the buildings that are abutting us and the properties that are abutting us. Further, I think what we really wanted to do too is to take away from the scale of the building is, as I mentioned, we've set it back further than than we need to, which I think is is nice. It brings down the scalability of the building. But it also allows us to build these berms up around the site, which further makes the building look a little bit smaller. And it actually makes it look more what it would be in the, in the business zone. And then finally, as early as a side note, when we go to build this, we've kind of looked at the earthwork and how this would all fit in here, would likely be dropping this down about four to five feet below the intersection grade as well. So it would be sitting down just a little bit more as well. So again, we think that makes a lot of sense and is is really kind of a formality associated with the, with the use. And then finally, the driveway location. As I mentioned in the presentation, our driveway is located in what we believe is the optimal location. You know, we have a traffic engineer as well who's who's on board and and is preliminarily looked at this. You typically want this to be as far away from the intersection as possible. It's closely aligned with this driveway here. By doing that, you're technically about 125 feet center line of the existing driveway and center line of the proposed driveway. Your regulations call for 250 feet. Again, that doesn't really make sense based on where this driveway is located. That would put the driveway right about here, which is much closer to the intersection and really would not work as well operationally. So we think that that variance makes sense and is beneficial to the overall operations. With that, that concludes our presentation. I believe that the, we've worked pretty closely with the town to this point, and we're at the very, very first step of a longer process. We think what we've requested makes makes much sense and is justified. We believe the project really fits in. We're excited about it. We think it would work very well. With that, we look forward to working with with the town as we move forward. Wayne is here and Paul is here as well. We can answer any questions or go into any, any detail that I may have left out of the presentation. Thank you for letting me present.
All right, thanks, John. I think I do have to say, when I first heard about the project, I was definitely not thrilled to hear about a warehouse kind of going in over here on Maple Street because I feel like that whole Maple Street has had a lot of development and industrial development. But I could see going through the process that this, it does make sense. I mean, it's definitely preferred to have the warehouse up front than to have a buy right and then have all the parking with the, you know, like the 18 wheelers and everything facing the street. I guess the few questions I would have would be, and I don't know, maybe Jim can answer this, but do we get in involved at all with traffic analysis? Because that's my other big concern is like the rapid refill in this intersection. Do we weigh in to have them do a traffic study and see what the impacts are going to be?
Right, so that that really would fall into the planning board's jurisdiction. I mean, basically, what what the boards look at is more big picture in terms of how it relates to from industrial to business zone. So, you know, you could certainly, you know, request from the applicant, very many reasonable actions, such as, you know, some comparisons of similar uses in the business zone to industrial, those types of things. I mean, I'm sure John could speak to the traffic patterns that a typical warehouse distribution center would, would interact with the intersection. Most of you guys probably already know what the typical traffic pattern is for a warehouse in that area. And then, you know, how it relates to a business zone used such as rapid refill and and their, their traffic patterns. But obviously, you know, without saying this, this use would have an impact to both Mechanic Street and Maple Street. So, you know, we could certainly highlight those issues, discuss those issues. If you think it's not more detrimental to the community and you're in favor of it, you know, these are things we could also highlight to the planning board when, if it gets from here to there. You know, to have a, they they mandate a, a traffic analysis through their special permit process. And, you know, would obviously be mitigating all those factors.
Okay. And the building height, then, the industrial is allowed at 40 feet then? So they'd be seeking a variance for going five feet above what's allowed for business?
Is that correct? Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, then I think, I mean, I think to me with the variances, certainly, they all make sense and it's beneficial to the town, in my opinion. But I guess the other question I would ask for John would be, what with the building, is there any sense of what the the elevations it's going to look like? What the exterior material materials are going to be?
Yeah, and I think Wayne, feel free to, feel free to jump in. But this is something we want to make it a nice looking building. We've had preliminary conversations with contractor and architect to really come up with something that's going to, going to look good. We do not have a final design at this point, but it isn't intended to be a, you know, a sheet of metal without any character. You know, there's going to be some glass along the, along the front and some different articulation along the front as well, just to really make this look, look well and look nice. It is something I think that would be submitting with the planning board application as well, just to make sure that that's reviewed and commented on and would be, you know, working with the town on that. But we don't have a final design of it at this point. It's all very preliminary. We do realize, however, it's a prominent location and are are planning accordingly.
The other question I had was the, I guess, in the back, I could see you have a fair amount of loading phase. But the, the employee parking seems like a lot of parking. Is that what's, that that many employees are going to be working in the warehouse? Or is that?
Typically, typically, you've got about one per thousand square feet is is the the rule of thumb for this type of a use. And that's what really what we have. We've, we've got one per, one per 1,120, 24 stalls.
Okay. I guess I'll open it up to the board then for any questions they have.
I have one question, Brian, if I may.
Yeah.
On the Mechanic Street coming east, is there going to be any mitigation for a left hand turn lane for trucks coming in that way?
That's a great question. That that actually came up in the, in the staff discussions that that we had. Can't recall if it was police or fire who brought that up. It was a very good question. So as you can see here, there's a left turn lane coming into into Lindemire. The roadway actually has the adequate width. And right here, you can't see from the aerial, it's kind of, kind of, kind of dull, but there's a striped lane in in here. I envisioned that we would carry this left hand turn lane into into this site. Again, we need the the final traffic study to come back, but that's the preliminary thoughts are we would be having a left turn lane coming into the site. So that moves through. And again, I think that was brought up by, by police or fire at our staff meeting and makes a lot of sense to us.
So the follow up question, have you thought about possibly the trucks entering from Maple Street, again, coming from one Mechanic Street with a left hand turn lane?
So coming, coming in here and turning left into the site?
Right.
We, we felt as though it would be better this way with the, with the one way circulation coming clockwise. You know, we can, we can look further at that when we do the study. We just thought it would be preferable coming in this way. There's nothing that would preclude a truck from taking a left, left in here if that was more desirable. But I think this, we thought made made more sense left, left in here and right out this way.
I agree that it would certainly be better that way coming from, heading west on Mechanic Street to turn in that way. But I'm not so sure that might be the best way when you're coming east on Mechanic Street. And I guess the traffic study would determine that.
Yeah, and we, we would work with whatever the, the town wanted on that based on the results of the of the traffic study.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you mind?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, overall, I really got a major issue with the variances move this building this way. For what you're trying to do, I think it's a better resolution. And I suppose a lot of my concerns would wind up at the planning board more than anything. But I definitely have a concern with a berm feature. And you, we're going to have to look at traffic of this because the traffic that Amazon has created was way over what they had originally pitched to us. And this intersection, I'm not sure if it handled trucks, trailers coming back out. And this intersection, I'm not sure if any handle tracks trails coming back out on the Maple Street. At any given morning, you're backed up past this entrance with the Amazon trucks. And that's probably three to four to five times a day. So dumping more tractor trills out there, I'm not sure that's going to work for us.
I know that's, I I have that, I definitely agree with that too, and I'm concerned with the traffic. But I guess at the same note, if they did buy right with the site, then it would still, they could.
I I don't, I do not disagree. I like this plan.
Yeah.
Originally pitched. I actually did not know that they were going to send trucks back out this way. And the line of traffic on Maple Street already.
Yeah.
Is quite intense.
And these are big trucks. I mean, the Amazon, just those little ones. I mean, that you could see on even rapid refill and the intersection here, yeah, there it's all the time.
I I mean, I mean, again, being also being a resident here, there have been mornings where we'll sit at traffic, wait for the Amazon trucks that are lined all the way up in the Canx Street, waiting to get into rapid refill.
Yeah.
I I think we're going to need something done with that section of Maple Street if we're going to dump. And again, I have no idea what the proposed truck traffic is that we'd have the planning board, I guess. But I think that has to be addressed.
Ryan, if I could ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Jim, so when we say a buy right use, this would be a a special permit, right?
Right. Due to the size of the building, you're correct. It would be a major business complex special permit. But yes, the industrial use is the buy right, I guess, is what he's referring to.
So there would be no buy right positioning of the building on the lot. Right? So that's that's not like a, that's not a must be, right? That would always be subject to a special permit.
Right, at that at that size, yeah.
Is that because of the square footage or could you explain that, Brian?
Me? So Jim can do a much better job, but if you if you hit the magic size, it becomes a special permit, basically.
Fifty thousand.
So it's not, so it's not a buy right use that, or at least from the business district that they could, or the industrial district.
So you have to locate it in there if it, once it goes over the 50,000, then it's a special permit.
Yeah, and then it would be subject to planning where it's discretion about location and size of the building and things like that. Do we know, do we have any sense of who may occupy this warehouse?
This is Wayne Finnegan. The the answer right now is no, because you you don't find a user for the the buildings until you receive the permit and the building can be built. No one is going to spend time working with us for a property until we have the permit.
Is this building being designed with a particular tenant in mind?
So we, this is a classic warehouse use, which, you know, could be, and and we have 40 tenants or 45 tenants in our portfolio today from tenants that use as little as 10,000 or 8,000 square feet, all the way up to 200,000 square feet, depending on their need. And, you know, the they they range from Utz potato chips, if you know them, from the local supermarket to Federal Express. So the the short answer is no, we we know that the location is desirable for a warehouse where goods are stored and then delivered, you know, through through the distribution kind of mechanism. But we don't have a a user mind. It also could be a good use for a modif- slightly modified manufacturing type process, but we think it's better for distribution just on the location, warehousing and distribution.
Would it be multiple tenants or could it be multiple tenants?
Absolutely. Yeah, it could be multiple tenants in this location, probably not more than two or three. It wouldn't be nine or 10 users of this in this location, but could be one, two, or maybe three users.
Okay. Do we have a copy of the original concept?
Yeah, I was curious to see that too.
I don't believe that was submitted formally.
Okay. With regard to, I mean, traffic is going to be for sure one of the biggest sticking points for this project, particularly at this intersection. I don't think you could have put your finger down on anywhere else in town and pick a more complicated intersection to put a facility like this next to. So my guess is, is that some sort of change will be needed to Maple Street to widen it, to increase the width, to maybe put longer lanes and probably to make the left turn lane. I'm never good at directions, but if you're leaving the facility from the back down Maple Street, the trucks would take a left to get onto 495, that left-hand turn lane and all of the other lanes would, I would think, would have to be extended to accommodate the additional traffic. If that were to happen, does your, does you you have the ability to move the building? Or would you have to move the building and are we losing anything in terms of screening if that should happen?
No. So so again, we we haven't done the the study yet, so we don't know what that what that would would result in. We were absolutely going to do that and we'll work very closely with the with the planning board on that. Should the study show that an additional left-hand turn lane is needed on on Maple Street? Here, we do have plenty of room to to accommodate that. You know, as I, as I mentioned, there's 45 feet of of green over here. If you needed to to move that in, you know, 12 feet or so, we would still have plenty of room to do a berm and the landscaping as proposed here. So so we have the room if something like that were were needed.
Another consideration is that this particular, like we've talked previously, this particular intersection is quite busy part of. One of the reasons why that intersection is busy is the property across the street is a popular gas station and next to it is a another series of businesses that are also quite popular and there's no connection between those properties. And it's been sort of the goal of the town to connect them so that people don't have to leave the that property or the gas station, say, get back on the road onto Maple Street, turn left onto Route 140, and then turn again into the shopping plaza that's right next door. And I understand that there is some common ownership between the applicant and the owner of the property across the streets was. One of the things that I think would be a reasonable request would be for some sort of connection or some consideration for a connection within that site, although it's off this particular parcel. But with that, I would mitigate some of the traffic concerns that this this proposal would put forth. So, sorry to keep hogging all the time, Brian. So this, to me, the use variance is is the largest. It's it's something that the zoning board really has to be very careful with, that where we where the we're given the discretion to just to uniquely change a parcel zoning. And to me, that that's a very with that kind of authority, we have to be very sure of what we're doing and make sure that we have all the information to do that. I don't know from the description of the proposal and the narrative and in the plan itself that that what was being asked for technically hits the the marks that we need to satisfy to to get to a zoning variance. I, the really, the only thing that that the use to get to use variance is really because any other way wouldn't be as good to the town. So so I struggle with that because the only thing that makes this job that we have to do is to follow the rules and to follow, you know, because there's a lot of people we want to help and do things and make right for them. And we really do try, but sometimes you have to say no, and it's difficult. So I don't, I'm not comfortable necessarily coming to a conclusion tonight. And, you know, we would, I do think that a traffic study and traffic analysis is, I'm sure is underway and it's going to be part of the planning board process. So if we could get some sense of what the impacts might be, where the proposed exits are, that would be good. If we could get an elevation of what the building might look like in terms of scale, that would be helpful to make a decision.
I think seeing the previous plan option too, right? I'd like to kind of see the process of how it came to this.
Right. And and if there's other, I I know that the, you know, that the size of the building is, there's a preferred size and then there's, maybe there's a more realistic size and and things like that. So it would be good.
Mr. Chairman, if if I can introduce myself, I could, I I I think I could at least respond to some of the things that Mr. Salisbury has raised.
Sure.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Paul Feldman. I'm an attorney at Davis, Mom and Do Augustine in Boston, and I do an enormous amount of land use permitting all different types of projects over the last 38 years. And I think this is my first opportunity to be before the ZBA in Bellingham. I appreciate that opportunity because I sort of keep a little checklist and out of the 351 cities and towns, I think I'm coming up to 100. And I think you're helping me get there. So nice to, nice to be with you tonight. Let me, let me just frame a couple of things for you guys to consider, because all the points that I've heard are just excellent points. But let me pick up on the last one that Mr. Salisbury said. I I happen to agree, you know, that's a use variance is a very important power that the zoning board has and it should be, you know, exercise, you know, you have to do consideration. And the one thing when I looked at this site that jumped out at me is that it it almost felt like, not knowing the history, that the business zone was really almost like spot zoning on this lot. This lot is surrounded industrial. You end up with this business zone that just particular to this lot. And I think that is something that 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 you could, that that is appropriate to consider. That it's it's not only, you know, it's one thing if, you know, all the property to the right and the left was was business and 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 the industrial was starting here, but it's sort of the opposite. We're right in the industrial zone with the entire parcel and and this front piece was carved out, made into the business zone. And 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 I, in some ways, I think that it makes it particularly unique and and appropriate for the exercise of a use variance in this context. Even the property directly across the street, before you hit the town line, is industrial. Even that front frontage on Maple directly across the street is industrial zone. So I I point that out as a as something to consider, because I do think it does make the 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 variance analysis unique to this to this situation. The the other thing I would point out is a little bit about our, about the development process. So we have the property under agreement and and we have a due diligence period to sort of evaluate, can we develop the property in in a way that, you know, we think makes sense and is a good, good plan and will be a good project for the community. And when we did that, we realized, you know, the threshold issue with the variances. And unless we have the support of the ZBA with those variances, there's nothing else for us to do and and we shouldn't invest a whole lot of money in design and, you know, all the details of of engineering and and traffic reports, which will amount to soft costs, you know, that will approach 100,000 and beyond without knowing if we can do this. And and that's why we're here first to the ZBA. And that's why we're here so early in our process, because our due diligence period is is going to expire. And we were, we we rush to try to get onto your agenda tonight so we can get your feedback. Certainly, you know, the all that I'm hearing with regard to traffic circulation and the like is a classic, you know, planning board site site plan review type issues. All good points that that you guys have made, I'm sure we're going to hear again. And and I completely appreciate, there may be when our traffic consultant does the analysis, a need to widen Maple Street. And as John pointed out, there's certainly the land area to do that without affecting the design. So I I'm, I'm, I guess I'm encouraging the zoning board, if you can see your way clear, to give us some, give us the feedback that we need to 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 advance the project. I'm not trying to cram you guys at all, but it I'm not sure what else we can present about the building itself and the site use itself that would would help you make that judgment about a variance. It's for you guys to make, and if you make it, we'll proceed. And if you don't give it to us, then we're going to end up terminating this purchase and sale agreement. And 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 I I I I will tell you that when when you have to evaluate this type of thing, the size of the building is a key parameter, because there are certain metrics that make a warehouse distribution facility work. You know, certain width and 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 the length, a certain number of loading docks. And so if you really want to build something that doesn't turn out to be a white elephant, but will really function correctly and 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 get the right quality tenants, that's what the metrics are that you're seeing on this plan. And we wanted to show you that. That's exactly what we wanted to show you. We wanted to to show you, look, this is the concept. And this is, this is why it works. And we think it it could be executed in a in a really beneficial way for everyone. So I I I don't know if that helped helped Mr. Salisbury with some of the decisions or 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 some of the other members. But you know, if you could see your way clear deliberating and and you know, coming to a conclusion, we would appreciate that. But I certainly would, they certainly wouldn't say no to other information requests you guys have. I'm not, I'm certainly not doing that. We're, we're here asking you guys for relief. We, we need your support. I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, poke you in the eye when I'm asking for your support. But I just wanted you to appreciate the entire process that we're in and 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 how much this costs and 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 sort of the steps we take in order to advance them all.
Yeah, no, we and we definitely appreciate that. And it sounds like you've been working with the town, which we appreciate. I think all that Brian is saying is that he's just saying he wants to get all, you know, more information and that it's a big decision to make. And I think for me personally, too, I would kind of like to see what the original kind of option was, to see kind of how the process evolved. Another thing I would kind of notice that I see how, as far as with the the zoning uses, I would kind of argue that if you go along Maple, and I think part of the concern is that all the effects that have happened to Maple Street is that if you look at the zoning map all down, if you're looking, because you guys for industrial, we're looking north, south on this kind of math. If you look kind of east, west, you could see there's a predominance of business zoning that does kind of have a continuation over into this property.
Mr. Chairman, if you may, if I may.
Yeah.
One of the things on a variance, and I pulled it up, is substantial detriment to public good. If we read the Atkins cover letter, second to last page, it says, allows employee traffic utilized Maple Street or truck traffic to access on Mechanic Street. And he leaves it. So there's no saying that in his proposal, the trucks are going to leave onto Maple, onto Maple Street. So I'm really concerned about the truck traffic there. And beyond just accessing there, we're saying you can only take a right-hand turn. We have two other warehouses on Maple Street that say the same thing, and it doesn't happen.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't know how the monitoring for that.
We went to great lengths with the Amazon buildings to put curbing up there, and the trucks just drive right over it.
Oh, really?
So I, I do have quite an issue with trucks entering onto Maple and adding more traffic there.
No, I, I totally agree with that. I guess, the one question I have too, for maybe back to Brian, would be, now I'm kind of going over this hurdle, the special permit, because you're saying the building they're proposing is 100,000 square feet. They could do 50,000, but if they go above the 50, they need a special permit. And if you look under the special permit criteria, it lists about not having any traffic flow, you know, having detrimental impact to traffic flow, community needs, neighborhood character and social structures. I guess I'd be interested to get kind of Brian's take on that.
Before you go there, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, isn't that a special permit for the planning board though?
Oh, that would be planning. Okay.
Yeah, I think we're here just for the, the three variances they're asking for. But again, to qualify for the variance, neighborhood characteristics just definitely fall into our agenda here.
Okay.
Unless I'm mistaken, please correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's why I was curious too, because on the application, it doesn't list the special permit, but maybe is that?
That, that is a planning board special permit. I think that's right. And, and when we, again, you're sort of like, you're our, you're our first go card. If we don't, it doesn't make any sense for us to talk to the planning board if, if, if you guys don't want to give us the variances. So that's why you don't see everything. But we're going to have to go through that entire permitting process with the planning board, both from a special permit point of view and a site plan point of view, and meet all those criteria in front of that board. But as a threshold, we, we, we need to get past you guys first. Mr. Feldman, I fully, I fully understand that and appreciate that. But as a zoning board, we have our criterias as well. And I wouldn't by any means say we don't want to give you the permit. I don't think any one of us have said that. For what could go on this property, I think it's not a terrible use, although I'm not sure we really need another warehouse. But it could be a good look, use, it could look well. But again, it has to be our criterias as well. Absolutely. And again, I don't misunderstand me. I, if it's the pleasure of the board to get more information, I'm, I'm never going to say no to that. I mean, that's, that's, that's you guys doing your job. I'm not, you're not going to get any pushback from me on that.
And Jim, just to clarify then, the special permit, so we are just tasked with the variances, with the three variances listed?
Right. So yeah, just to review real quick. So yeah, you have three variances in front of you. And so these three variances help guide that design of the project. Essentially, if the, the variances aren't granted, well, despite the, you know, the applicant saying, maybe they wouldn't proceed with it, you know, otherwise it would be, you know, a driveway towards the center of the project, a smaller building maybe in the industrial side only, the butts of trucks facing this way. So there's some detriments, I think, to doing it as, as in, in conformance with the bylaws. So that's why they're before you with the three variances. As Brian mentioned though, there are at least one special permit that would be before the planning board. And so the planning board is then tasked with, okay, we have a project in hand, which is this warehouse perhaps. And it also comes with basically three decisions from the zoning board that says, these three bylaws, we've granted them some relief to try and improve that project. So here, here is those decisions. Now, planning board, it's your turn to start looking at all of those special permit criteria and determine whether or not they meet those criteria. So yeah, this is, this is truly step one. If, you know, if it doesn't move past step one, you know, there are, there would be different alternatives for the applicant or the property owner. And so then either way, it would go to the planning board next. That tonight, with your decision, nothing gets built. It's just simply relief of a bylaw for them to continue on with the development process.
All right. Thanks, John. Yeah, I definitely agree with Brian that I would like to see some building elevations. And I, I would kind of like to see the first option, even if it is just more, it doesn't have to be fully rendered like this, but I kind of like to see where it started and how it developed to this point. But, and then I don't know, Brian, if you want to reiterate back on some of the other points that you were saying that you'd like to get more clarification.
I, I think, you know, and I appreciate the applicant, they're, they're going out of their way and working with Jim and the staff, and have really been thoughtful, and their presentation's been thoughtful. And I appreciate all that. If we could just get a little bit more information about what this is conceptually might look like if you're standing at the intersection with what, 40 feet versus 45 feet? And I know that there's at least tentative plan to grade it down five feet to make it look somewhat smaller. If we could get a sense of what that might look like, that would be helpful and.
So are you, you're thinking more like almost perspectives, kind of looking down like Maple Street or seeing back from Mechanic Street?
Yeah, just a rough idea to get some sort of scale that just, you know, because I don't have a very good imagination. So if I could visualize it, that would be helpful.
Brian, are you also, Brian, are you also asking for what the building itself might look like?
No, not, I mean, not really. Just some idea of what the scale might look like. I think that, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves, and all of that would play out in the planning board.
Okay.
Just, just on the issue of, because I don't, you know, you know, what's the difference between 40 and 45 feet? Is it going to look out of scale with the rest of the buildings? That's, you know, it's, it's, that one I'm struggling with, to be honest with you. I, I get, I get the business.
There, there are renderings that we could do to help, to help with that. I mean, there just are. And, and in terms of, you know, and we could talk to the contractor and try to present something that while we can't see it, it's exactly what it's going to look like. We're not going to, you know, present something that we really is different than what we intend to do. I mean, we're going to try to make a fair representation of, of, of what it is that we're thinking about so that, you know, you guys are really making a judgment on what we're, what we're showing you. Mr. Chairman, also, as obviously we're going to be back with this again, but, and I know this is a big alphabet here, but 24012B3A, that's the actual bylaw here. I really need that looked at and how it's going to be detrimental to the neighborhood. And that's purely on truck traffic. And, you know, and Paul, by all means, I'd invite you to, at 10 o'clock any morning of the week, you know, pack out there and see what it's like.
Yeah, I, I.
It's, it's not a good situation. Understand, and, and give us an opportunity to, you know, we, we did already bring on board a traffic consultant, Jeff Dirk from Venice Associates. He's one of the best guys in the state. And, and we'll, we'll take the feedback that we hear from you, Peter, and from the other members of the board, and we'll go back to him and, and articulate exactly the concerns, and let's see what he has to say. Can I, can I ask a question? I mean, because your driveway is, what'd you say, 125 feet, center line to center line?
Right.
To the other, yeah, right there?
Yep.
They swing tractor trailers out of that all day long too. Not that it's a great thing crossing there, but you're only 100 feet, 125 feet from another intersection doing the exact same thing. I, at first, when I first heard about this, I said, oh my God, you can't take tractor trailers out of there. But then I sat there and I saw what was happening with Lindemire, and I'm like, okay, well, that's not terrible. So that made the excitation, just to swing them right back out the same way they came in. Well, we, we actually asked Jeff Dirk about that 125-foot separation to make sure we weren't, you know, creating a, a traffic engineering issue. And he, he said we weren't. But we'll, we'll, that's the whole point. We're going to talk to him about the entire traffic scenario. And I mean, so one of your variances, that driveway being so close, and I'd be more comfortable with it being that close if the traffic was going back out that way too. I would not have an issue with that at all.
I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Ray.
Yeah, thank you, John and Paul. I really appreciate you coming, being proactive and coming with a nice early conceptual plans. But I do agree with Peter in terms of the traffic. I always take Mechanic Street going west, and the traffic already is really bad right afternoon. And then also in the morning, going down east, and also I, I always get stuck past the rapid refill. So I can't, just imagining, you know, trucks going in and even going out through Mechanic Street, I don't think that's even viable. And I agree about Maple Street being a bit, a bit narrow, and expanding it would definitely help. Regarding the variance for the 125-foot require, you know, requiring, we require 250 feet, and in this case, it's 125 feet, I feel like it's difficult for me to make a decision without the traffic study, as Peter expressed. You know, sorry for pushing you to do a bit more work without being, without giving you a solid answer, but I feel like it's really difficult for the zoning board to make a decision without that information presented. And as Brian, Mr. Salisbury had expressed, it would be good to at least get just kind of like elevation-wise, what it would look like compared to street level. And, you know, we really want to work with you, but we, we need to see the community needs being met to really be comfortable, given the variance in this case.
Absolutely. Fully appreciate, fully appreciate all the feedback. And Jim, I don't, I, I would certainly hope you don't walk away from the meeting thinking that, you know, it's a shutdown, we're totally against it. I mean, it's like with any other project that we have to face, especially of this nature, structure, stature. We have concerns, and I, hopefully we can work through them.
Okay. Do we want to make a motion for a continuance then to the next meeting?
I will move to continue till the June meeting.
Second to the motion. June 3rd.
June 3rd? Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed? All right. Yeah, I want to thank, thank you guys, John, Paul. We definitely appreciate that you're working with the town and, you know, listening to everyone and trying to make a good effort to balance your needs with the community and with the town. So we look forward to seeing you in June.
So Brian, I, I guess, I guess the question is, to ask these guys if that gives them enough time to get the information that we're requesting.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. If it, I'd like to, first of all, I want to express our appreciation back to you guys. You know, there's volunteer boards, you dedicate your time, and you're doing something important. And it's, it's legally required for us, and we need people like you, and we, we appreciate that. I'd like to keep us on the June 3rd meeting so that we see if we can get it done. If it turns out we can't come back to you with, you know, with the responsive information that we now know you need by June 3rd, we'll ask for a continuance. We won't take up your time. We'll ask for that meeting to be continued, and, and, and we'll just roll it. But, you know, give, give us a chance to, to do what we need to do in the next three weeks and be able to get stuff into you guys, you know, a few days before your meeting, so you have a chance to digest it. And if we can't hit that, we'll let you guys know, and we'll, we'll, we'll ask for it to be bumped another month.
Okay. Yeah, I apologize. Good point. I guess I should check with you guys to make sure you can actually make that, but.
And, and this is, this is Wayne, trying to get him, the developer, as I mentioned earlier. So we're really looking at two, two things, which are design, elevation, street level, kind of trying to get conceptual feel of what the building is, and then traffic in and around the building. Those are the two things I heard mentioned. There was a third thing mentioned about our neighboring properties, which of course, we, we don't have any control over those properties. So I, I don't know that, that, that's something that's, I don't know the degree of importance of that versus focusing more specifically on what's happening on our property and around our property.
Yeah, and I, I think for the, the views, the perspective was just to get kind of a sense of scale.
Yes.
You don't have to worry too much about the building materials and all that.
Okay.
Just kind of views down Mechanic and Maple.
Yeah. Okay. So I, I think with that, we can, Paul, we can deliver the views, so it's more, it's more the traffic, I think.
Right. We have to do, let's talk, let's talk to Jeff. I mean, we're not going to be, we're not going to, we're not going to, we don't intend or plan to conduct a traffic study, but we can, we can, the traffic consultant could provide a lot of information about the traffic generation of a facility like this, how it works, how it would work. You know, we, there's a, there's a, this is not, we're not doing something unique here. There's a lot of data out there that the traffic consultant can bring. And Mr. Feldman, with that said, the unique situation with this intersection, that has to be not just general traffic studies, but what is already existing at this intersection is very important to work in. Right. But so, so then this, that's an important question, Peter. If you're, so is the board asking us to, to do a full traffic study? Meaning do all the peak hour counts, do all the, you know, daily, daily traffic counts? And actually get data? If that's the case, then I know we're not going to be able to produce a, a traffic study in a month. That I, that I know for sure. Or what I, what I thought was that we would ask Jeff to do, do an analysis of our proposed use, and he'll go out to the intersection. He'll be able to address a lot of issues, and we would ask him to come frankly to the meeting, so you could ask him directly. Observations. We would, we would, we would, I would ask Jeff to present to you guys, you know, how, how he thinks that the traffic would work in, in, in relation to the other properties. And he, he wouldn't be able to do that without actually going out to the intersection and observing it. But I'm playing about, you know, the counts and, and all that stuff, that, that, that takes weeks to do. I, I think, and I, board can speak for themselves personally. I think that's, you're going to need to address that with the planning board. But I think for your own good, someone have boots to the ground and see what goes on there, and have your traffic consultant say, you know, we're sending 50 trucks to this intersection, and it's going to be a debacle. Or, you know, they could come up there at the intersection. That would work better.
Just to, just to kind of put a bow on this one, I've already talked to their traffic engineer, and he's already been out on site and has done counts, actually, to my understanding. You know, given, given the COVID situation, obviously the trips are down some. So I did ask him to look back at his, some historical data. But I did mention that, you know, COVID did not stop Amazon, so the Amazon numbers are probably fairly accurate. But the balance of the, the intersection, they should be looking a little bit historical as well.
And just speaking for myself, I know I would find it useful, I know that the, that traffic engineers will say, okay, this is a warehouse, this is this facility, this is of this size, so many. So there's, you know, they look up on their tables and say, okay, it's going to be this many trips roughly. And based on the distribution of where people might turn, you know, 100 trucks come out Maple Street, 100 trucks will go Mechanic Street and go left and go right, something of that sort of, you know, not that in the weeds details, but something like that, you know, this kind of facility generally generates this much trips. That would be helpful.
Yes, that's, that's something that, that, that I was expecting that we would be able to present, because that kind of trip generation and distribution, which that's what you were referring to, Brian, is, it's not only the number of vehicle trips, but how they distribute. That's something that Jeff Dirk can work up. And, and I didn't realize, Jim, that he already had done some counts. I didn't know, Wayne, that, that Jeff, that Dirk had already done that.
I appreciate that. And then just to put another point on it, what we've done typically when the Victory building down Maple Street went in, and then the Campanelli buildings went in without any known tenant or use, we've asked the traffic engineers on those projects to assume the worst-case scenario. We've asked the traffic engineers on those projects to assume the worst case scenario, which happens to be an Amazon and low and behold, it was an Amazon. So if you could, I know that'll be asked at the planning board and if your analysis could assume sort of not the middle, but the worst case scenario, that would, that would be very helpful.
So there are categories of warehouse distribution and I understand what you're saying. Pick the category that is the heaviest traffic generation category.
Yeah, cuz that, that's gonna be where the planning board starts anyway, so.
Yeah. Understand.
I appreciate that. And then one, just one other thing, yeah, do you mind providing just to show the original scheme for the warehouse? I'd just be curious to see what it looked like originally, where it was flipped over.
So I, I, I actually have never seen it, so I'll, I'll leave that up to John.
I mean, just, just for me personally, it'd be a good perspective to kind of see where the, how it came to this, which makes sense, but to see what it originally looked like would be helpful. Yep, we can certainly do that. Okay. Any other comments from the board?
I'm good.
I think, I think we had a first and a second. I don't know if we had an actual vote, if we could just all in favor.
Alright, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Okay, let me see. Alright, the next item on the agenda is uh, continuation for a special permit for 109 Patricia Drive for an animal kennel. Uh, the applicant is Jose Montenegro. Um, is he available?
I'm here.
Jose, hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Um, so Jim, where did we leave off on this one? I'm just trying to recall.
Yep. So uh, where we left off is the, the board had requested a draft decision to kind of evaluate the um, how the conditions would shape out and if it was uh, effective enough. Um, so in your package tonight, you have that draft decision for consideration. Um, tonight though, if you do have any other questions, comments for the applicant or any questions uh, from the public, you could take those. Um, if not and you've exhausted your review, I would just recommend closing the hearing before you start analyzing that decision.
Okay, um.
Hmm. I have a question if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Jose, it's been 30 days now. What activities um, have you done to try to find new homes for a couple of these dogs?
Uh, I've been still trying to reach out to friends to see if they're looking to get um, to take any of the pups, but um, they're still thinking about it and they don't want to commit to anything just yet, as um, you guys haven't given me an answer.
Okay.
I have also, um, I did not send a picture, but I can show you on my phone. I've already started changing some of the fences um, around the property.
Yeah, that I was gonna ask, yeah, cuz Jason, I think, asked about that too.
Yes, yep. So we have already made progress on those. Uh, we already have all the fans that we need to change around the property, which is going, week by week and changing some as, as we can.
Need a motion to close the hearing, Brian?
Um, unless, is there any more discussion from any of the board members?
Jose, has anything uh, else changed other than?
Um, yep, I, I believe one of the constraints um, from one of the neighbors was if I was gonna get more um, pups, um, the last female had finally been spayed as well. Let me show you here. Um, she got spayed actually yesterday since we had a little issue with our vet uh, closing down for our appointment week. So um, that is also being finalized. So no more extra animals in the house or property.
How many animals do you have right now in the house?
So it's still six, um, still the six Siberian, uh, Siberian houses.
Have, have you heard anything from uh, neighboring, from neighbors?
Nope, no, no one complained, nothing about them. Um, just every time we walk in, they're always, I'm so happy to see them.
That's great to hear. How, how have the dogs been uh, with, you know, traffic, foot traffic around the, the house?
They're always, they're the same. Uh, they are curious, but they don't like it. I mentioned in the previous meeting, they don't bark.
Okay.
They are not the dogs that come back.
Thank you, Jose.
Okay. Should we, um, any other comments from the board? Alright, Art, do you want to make a motion to close?
Unless you wanted to open up to the public, I don't know if you've done that or not.
No, that's a good point. Um, yeah, I'll open up to the public. Any other, any neighbors or butters that want to speak, just state your name and address. Do you know if there's anyone on the public that you can see, Jim?
No, it doesn't look like anybody.
Motion, motion to close the hearing then.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed? Okay. So do we want to just go over the um draft decision or do you want to have just general discussion amongst the board or what do we think is
Well, I'm hoping that all the board read the draft decision and I just had one comment on it. Unless you, you want Jim to go through the draft.
I've read it.
Okay, so the one comment I had is, Jim, so um something that, something to say that as one dog leaves, they won't be replaced until we're down to the four. I didn't see anything in there for the draft decision.
Yep, uh, I believe it's here. One second, let me just.
Yeah, I think it's number 10 where it says um annual review of this permit shall be required at a regularly scheduled zoning board of appeals meeting until such time as the applicant achieves the animal kennel limit for dogs.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything about not adding another animal or replacing.
So if they happen to get a home for one dog, um, this statement allows them to get another one.
Yeah, and that's why, that's what we don't want, correct?
Yep, yep. Yeah, that should have, that should have said and uh, it's a limit of four dogs and then, yeah, and then that is the limit. I, I thought I did have it in there, but nevertheless, I'll add it. No problem.
Actually, you do have it in there, the four is the limit, but there's no verbiage in there um, saying that, you know, if one finds a new home that they can't bring another dog in.
Right.
Right, okay. So six is the maximum and as each, as each dog leaves, that's the new maximum, basically. I'll, I'll, I'll wordsmith that, but yeah, I got it.
Thank you.
Good point.
Good call, Art.
Yeah, I don't think I had anything, any other changes. Yeah, I, that was the only thing I was gonna add as well.
I think it was great. Yeah, I feel comfortable with the, you know, Board of Health inspections and uh, the annual reviews.
We need a motion, Brian?
Sure, unless anyone wants discussion, but I guess we could just do a motion.
Oh, we can have discussion after the motion as well, so.
Okay.
Uh, motion to uh, grant the request for the permit as requested, uh, with the changes as we noted.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay.
Was there any opposed?
Not to that motion.
Okay.
Um, and I just, I'll be right front of the board and, and official, um, I am not comfortable with six dogs on their property. It's a small property, especially six large dogs. It's just my personal. I, I just don't see it. I don't see this being viable. I don't see this being good for the, the pets. I just don't see it.
Ordinarily, Peter, I would agree with you absolutely, but um, since there has been no objections by any of the neighbors and, you know, what we're, what we're really looking is to make sure that um, all of, all of the uh, all of the public is, is satisfied and judging by all the responses from all of the neighbors, um, and the questions that was asked by the board as well, it seems as though it would work.
Yeah, I agree with Art. I mean, I would kind, I kind of rely on what the neighbor, neighbor feedback is. But I did.
Do we have any verbiage about um, kind of an inspection after a month or three months, was it?
I think there was, right, for
There's verbiage in there about inspection. I think it's annual law.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Is, would it be good to kind of have one earlier, at least maybe one or perhaps three months right after they move in?
Was there a discussion about if there's so many complaints, then there's
Two, yes. If there's two complaints or more from the neighbors, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the number nine, I believe. Uh, for complaints or during inspections, if there's violations, I believe that's what it, uh, yeah, complaints. If multiple complaints are made to either, to either any of the town employees, the animal control officer, building inspector, town planner, et cetera, within a calendar year, the applicant shall be required to come before the zoning board of appeals at a regularly scheduled meeting to discuss measures the applicant is taking to remedy the concerns. Failure to comply with the corrective measures agreed to shall be deemed a violation of special permit and shall provide the zoning board of appeals with grounds to avoid the permit.
I'm, I'm kind of saying that.
Oh, go ahead, Brian.
I, I was kind of saying that to see if Peter would feel more comfortable. I agree with Peter, six is a lot, but perhaps having an inspection happen, you know, let's say the neighbors can't see what's happening in there, you know? Thank you, Jose, for, you know, replacing the fence.
And, and I appreciate that. I, um, my, my feeling and my opinion comes from um, the welfare of the dogs. I, I'm gonna be honest, I know the, the neighbors are okay with it. Um, I, I love dogs. I've had dogs all my life and um, these dogs need to be out, they need to run, they need space and have a six confined to that area. That, that's where my feelings come from. So it's, it's really not the, the zoning bylaw that's
Right.
putting me in that direction. It's just my personal feeling about the dogs, that's all.
So with animal control visiting at an earlier, not an annual um, period, that, that's kind of where I'm going at. Perhaps adding something in there as a requirement.
I think that would help.
I think we already voted on it though, technically speaking.
We did too.
What do you want, Brian?
I think, I think we, we adopted the proposed order.
Right.
Yeah, I was a little confused where we're going with that. Yeah, there, there was a vote for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Peter was the only one that didn't get it.
That's okay, that. So I gotta have amended though, and if, if you want me to add the, you know, a uh, three month uh, review by the animal control officer, I know she's been in touch with Jose before. I don't think that would be an issue.
I'd feel more comfortable. Sorry for doing that later.
Good.
Okay, no problem.
Should we, uh, just to make it formal, Jim, or does it matter?
Yeah, that, might as well.
Well, actually, before you make a formal, yes, we did vote on it. I think I'm the only one that needed it last time.
Yep, four, I got four one.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, motion to add the amendment as uh, as Ryan suggested.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jose.
So Jose, um, the board has granted you uh, this permit. I'll be finishing up uh, the permit tomorrow. We'll get a sign stamped in with the town clerk. Um, you then have 20 day appeal period. So if any of the neighbors do have concerns, they technically are allowed to appeal this, this decision, but once that 20 days expires and if no appeals happen, then uh, he'll reach out to you with uh, your approval, as well as uh, Amy from my office will be providing you with a letter of approval and outlining all these conditions. Um, you do need to record that at the registry of deeds um, to make it uh, effective.
Alright, thank you very much, guys. Alright.
Thank you. Good luck. Take care.
He's fine.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is uh, special permit, continuation of a special permit for earth removal between mechanic street and Charles River. Applicant is uh, Snowflake LLC, uh, care of Kevin Lobosier. Lobosir. Lobosir, thanks, Brian. Alright, Jim, what's the um, update?
Yeah, so uh, very similar to the last one, minus the dogs. Um, so this is uh, you know, we, we vetted the earth removal process for Red Mill um, subdivision. And uh, at the last meeting, the board requested a draft decision for consideration. Um, also from the last meeting, um, you know, the, the board did request our peer review engineer take a a, a look at um, the plan for the earth removal. The, the peer review engineer is well, uh, burst in this project uh, from the planning board side of things. Uh, so he was able to uh, provide some assistance there. And so you see in the, in the draft conditions, there are uh, many things that could stem from uh, my coordination with the peer review engineer. So again, if, if the board doesn't have any other questions or if there's any comment from the public, uh, once you exhaust our review, if you could just please uh, formally close the hearing and then we could review any draft conditions.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Alright, is there any um thing, discussion from the board members?
I'm here.
Okay, is there any comment from the public? Are there any um neighbors or butters or anyone that uh, would like to speak?
Doesn't look like it, Brian.
Okay. Do we want to make a motion? Can I, can I ask a question? Sure. Jim, um do I, and I, I didn't see it, but maybe it's in there, but do we want to add anything about um, is it Mill Street? What's the name of that street?
Mill.
Um, no.
About, yeah.
About exiting and, and which direction to exit? If it's in there, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not specified in the decision. However, it references the plan and the, their earth removal plan states a right turn only off of Mill Street. Uh, until, until such time as the other uh, entrance, you know, is, is completed. Uh, so the other being all the way down to mechanic street, you know, blasting through all that ledge and fun stuff. Uh, but yeah, that the plan executes phase one being right turn only out of Mill Street.
And, and then at some point, they'll stop using Mill Street.
Exactly right.
Okay.
And if I make a question, I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, babe.
Trucks returning, while we're starting this project. Um, would they become in, not directionally challenged right now, but up 126 and taking a left into Mill Street? Come from like the Dairy Queen area is, how does that work?
Mark, that's all you.
Yeah, I, I don't believe that they'll be coming, or many will be coming from uh, from the north, if you will, coming south on 126, taking a left onto Mill Street.
Okay.
Uh, again, it'll be dependent upon um, who is providing the vehicles. Um, whether it be, you know, Pine, whether it be Kimball, whether it be uh, other folks. But I think when we, when we remove the earth, it goes to different spots uh, in the area. When they come back, they, they're, they'll basically become backtracking their exact same route.
Well, exactly. If they're, they're taking a right and go head north, would they be coming back from the north as well?
Most likely.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'm sure they could make those turns. It's just a, that's a busy intersection. We take the left process with a big truck.
So Jim, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, the planning board um is not allowing the left turns, right, from 126?
Right, left turn in from 126. You could take a right turn in, on Mill Street from 126 and a right turn out. So it's right in, right out. That's right.
Uh, there's gonna be a no left something right there.
Right, there'll be a sign there. There is actually, and, and uh, the prod, uh, the applicant is improving that, that intersection as well slightly. Uh, yeah.
So it would be that, but I, I don't think it would be uh, terribly imposing to say no left-hand turns from 126 into Mill Street.
So basically no left-hand turns on the trucks while they're doing this.
Well, they would have to
Either in or out.
Either in or out, no left-hand turns.
Well, they can't, I, I, they just can't make those left-hand turns at that intersection. It's just
But they can.
Well, they can, but it's crazy, right? Well, I guess, Jim, is there any reason to not have that as part of one of the conditions in this? Because I know you're saying it's kind of tangentially referencing the plan.
Yep, yeah, we could certainly make a specification that no left during earth removal, no left-hand turn from 126 to Mill Street, as well as no left-hand turn from Mill Street to 126. I don't, I don't think that's uh, unreasonable.
Is that agreeable to the applicant?
Yes, I, I totally understand the leaving Mill Street and turning a left. That's the, the most difficult uh, turning movement. I don't understand, and I, I've lived in the area for 50 years. I don't understand why Turning movement, I don't understand, and I've lived in the area for fifty years, I don't understand why coming down one twenty-six, you can't. Before you come to the light, take a left onto Mill Street.
So that's a challenging intersection, I mean, we, what, I mean, if you wanted some, you know, maybe some leeway there, I mean, we could certainly. Maybe if the board is amenable for that left onto Mill Street, you know, maybe if you know there is a contractor that's gonna be coming. From the north, we could schedule a detail for that. I mean, the cost on the applicant, obviously, but.
With the time, can we do with time periods? Would that also?
I mean, this is gonna be long-run project and.
I mean, during the day, during rush hours.
You know, if you've got trucks, you know, trying to cut across, that's gonna back that all the way up past Walgreens and beyond.
So I agree, there's a lot of traffic there.
Only right turns, I know the truck's gonna drive further, but that's just the easiest way.
Would it be an option to limit no-left turns between rush hours, at rush hours only?
The permit currently says between nine and four.
Okay.
That they would be operating, it's just, it's a really kind of a dangerous maneuver, even in a Honda Civic. To take a left, depending on the time of the day, into Mill Street, you know, so if you're, if you have a. Heavy truck that doesn't accelerate very fast and you're desperate to get over, you know, I would be concerned about that.
I mean, listen, in all honesty, I, Sunday afternoon, Saturday afternoon, Sunday afternoon, I figured afternoon it was. We drove down there, went to Dairy Queen for a quick bite, and that was tough getting in and out of there. Because I came from the north and I exited back out, and that was in my personal vehicle, it wasn't easy to get in and out.
Was it more difficult getting out or coming in? I've never had the difficulty coming in.
I had trouble, I came out of the parking lot and I went to take a left to go in there and the cars were coming the other way, I had to hold up traffic.
I drive it almost daily and, yeah, there's always, a lot of people will stop and slow down going towards, you know, Honeydew and Dairy. There, there usually is, I'll always like break right before. The Dairy Queen there, going.
I only think it would benefit you, that's just, that's all my.
I completely appreciate the input, as I said, like a lifelong resident. I don't have any opposition, I think, because this is such a phased project, too, maybe we work it in, maybe, Jim, phasing-wise, I don't know, phase one. Will be primarily coming in off of Mill Street and maybe phase, as soon as phase two opens up. The Mechanic Street intersection is gonna be open, so maybe we think a little bit along those lines as far as. Whatever conditions that you impose, maybe only exists through phase one.
Right, so it would be, you're saying just Mill Street, is that, is what you're referring, right? Yeah, oh yeah, I think that's what the board is saying, I don't think they have any opposition to you taking a left on Mechanic Street at the. Both the, basically the both signalized intersections, is that what you're referring, yeah?
Yeah, 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 so I think after phase one, both signalized intersections will be up and operational, so. Yeah, during phase one, you make that, make that stipulation.
Yeah, absolutely, because you also, like you stated before, you're gonna have a little room of stockpile while you're cutting, while you're starting phase two and open that.
Yeah.
Roadway, so.
Yeah.
I'm certainly in agreement with that.
Brian, I do see, I think Town Administrator Dennis Frank has his hand up.
Oh, okay, yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
Hey, Brian, good evening, guys. Good discussion tonight, Pete, the only concern I have with. Not allowing trucks to turn left in there, think about what they're gonna have to do. If they, if they know they're coming back and they know they can't go left onto Mill, they're going up High Street, or they're coming down Maple and around that way. I just think they're looking at alternate routes that may be less palatable, so. I like the idea of discouraging them or not allowing them during rush hour, but. You know, between nine-thirty, ten o'clock and three o'clock in the afternoon, I don't think it's as much of an issue, but. They're gonna have to come some way to get back in there and it's gonna be cut-throughs around town, that's the only concern I have. I know there's no easy answer to it, but just something to think about.
Yeah, it's a good point.
You're right, they can just cut down High Street and make the loop up and around and.
Yeah, it's just.
There is actually two lanes when you're coming from the north into Bellingham Center. So, and the left, and the lane that's going straight to the left usually isn't as long, so it's. It isn't quite as bad for that left-hand turn onto Maple, onto Mill Street, actually, as if you were going straight up one twenty-six towards One Socket.
Yeah. At five o'clock in the afternoon, it's a problem, but I don't think it is up until, you know, three o'clock or three-thirty or something like that, if it was. You know, allowed between certain hours or something like that might make more sense, but that was just my observation, I'm gonna. I'm gonna mute myself and get out of here, unless you continue.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you.
Is it possible to, all right, let's, you know, not put a restriction out right now and see how it goes and. If it becomes an issue, can we readdress it? Is that possible?
I don't know, Jim, is that, is that possible?
I mean, we can certainly, I can certainly think, draft up some language that, you know, you know, if. We could leave it to the safety officer that if it becomes a concern, he could raise it with the board and bring the applicant back in, certainly, and if. And if it is an issue, there could be a remedy, much like we did with the last, you know, decision.
Yeah, I was thinking something along those lines, if we get any multiple complaints about either the dust or the traffic. You know, we can revisit the plan.
Okay, that makes sense.
I mean, I'm on board with that, I mean, the town manager say he doesn't believe this issue and the applicants. So, I mean, I'm open to allow it and then, you know, readdressing it if it does become an issue.
So, how long before the Mechanics, Mechanic Street side opens?
So that's gonna be the end of phase one, Arthur, it's probably gonna be about a year, year and a half before the entire. It's about forty-eight hundred linear feet is constructed, so I'm gonna guess about a year.
All right.
How many trucks during that year, do you think, how many trips?
About a hundred a week if we're looking at the, at the figures that you gave last time, it's twenty-seven thousand trucks. And if you, if you narrow that down for a week, it's a hundred.
And actually, if you really want to start doing that, that's twenty ins and twenty outs a day.
Right.
I mean, if we use it five full workdays and hundred trucks a week.
Yeah, that's a good ballpark.
Yeah, I mean.
Jim, we can, we can condition that if there's a complaint, that's, that somehow there's a review.
Yeah, I would say, based on complaints, I would say I would recommend a staff review, because. To be honest with you, every truck that drives down, you know, a road, some, either me or the safety officer, or somebody's getting a complaint, so. I think maybe it's a staff review and if it becomes a real issue, a new, you know. Deemed by either me, the building inspector, the safety officer, whoever you want, then we can bring it to the ZBA for your consideration. And much like the last decision, you know, we could work on remedies to solve that, that issue, and if. The applicant doesn't comply, then it would be a violation of this permit, which, you know, could lead to either a cease and desist or fines, or what have you.
But we, but we can do that, we can condition that in that decision.
Absolutely, Brian.
Yeah.
Okay, let's condition based upon, I guess, your recommendations.
Discretion.
Discretion, yeah.
So, just to touch on ours, I think the decision said between nine and four, do, do we wanna have any sort of consideration for? You know, nothing. Like if all the trucks get in there at, during rush hour, and then they wait till nine, and then they get out, are we avoiding any problems? Or, you know, how do we deal with that, with the trucks arriving prior to nine but not departing before nine, are we really solving any problems? Just a thought for discussion.
So I'm guessing that the trucks leave full and they come back empty, so at the end of the day, they just, are they leaving their trucks there, so therefore that. They don't have to have that extra trip out?
I would think not, it's probably gonna be a private company, the driver's gonna bring their trucks back. They're probably gonna come in empty, then go all full, I'm just guessing.
I think that's probably correct, yeah, I think, depending upon the off-takers, they're not gonna leave their vehicles on the property.
All right.
Yeah, with the ones I've dealt with, they're usually impatient and don't wanna wait there, idling, because it costs money.
Yeah, so to that point, Brian, I don't think there'll be many vehicles coming in at seven and loading up by seven-thirty and then. Waiting an hour and a half to leave, so I think if the condition is to come and go between nine and three, they'll show up at nine and leave at three, not. Not show up at seven.
Okay, fair enough.
Good question. And I think we're covered with the complaints, if there are enough complaints, we can revisit it.
Brian, were you okay with the nine to four, or do you like nine-thirty to three-thirty, or do you wanna change that at all, or? You know, just to make sure we don't hit the rush hour traffic?
Are you talking to me or Ryan?
Yeah, you, Mr. Salisbury.
That's much better, thank you. I think that, I think that the rush hour and the school traffic and everything, I mean, four o'clock is crazy time. But I don't think we can close the window too much, you know, what do you think?
So, ideally, the nine-thirty to three-thirty would be better, but I understand what you're saying as well.
I'm comfortable with that because that way you space the times that the trucks enter and leave a bit more, you're constricted.
What are you comfortable with, Ryan?
I'm comfortable with nine to four personally, to let them, you know, give them enough time to do it and also space the trucks out so that they're not all leaving at the same time or. Getting in at the same time. That's my personal opinion.
Okay. So I guess with that, there any other discussion points, then?
Don't have any.
I wanna condition it that Mark Allen has to haul out most of the.
One, one pickup truck at a time.
One pickup truck at a time. Between, between two AM and five AM.
I'm up anyway, I got a young kid, a young child.
Oh, just one more thing, we talked about safety officer, is that gonna be a condition?
So, I have, so I've nixed the whole no-left turn, but the amendment is to add. Some wordsmithing of if there are traffic or dust concerns. Express to the traffic safety officer, building inspector, or other town employees. That, you know, it'll be, those concerns could be brought to the zoning board of appeals for review. And, and a remedy will be established with the applicant, and if that remedy is not. Completed by a certain amount of time, I think in the last one, we had three months, but maybe we do it a little quicker than that, maybe a month. By the next meeting, perhaps, then that would be a violation of this permit.
That's good, so, but there's gonna be somebody there all the time directing traffic with the trucks coming in and out, correct?
I don't believe so, no.
Would we not want that as a condition?
Do we need it between nine and four? That's the, that's the question.
Well, going, taking that a step further, as Dennis mentioned, maybe we are better having that left-hand turn in. So that they're not using Maple Street and High Street.
Well, yes, I think Jim put that in there, but by taking out the whole word left-hand turn. I, we don't want to eliminate allowing them to take a left to get out of there.
Right, but you didn't have a take a left going in, though, Jim, right, or not?
Right, yeah, so I thought we had nixed the no-left turn in. At this time, but if it becomes a concern, then we would bring the hall, we would bring the applicant in and say, you know. It's just not working out, you guys are causing an issue at this intersection, we gotta find another route.
Yeah.
And maybe, Jim, you can reference that left turn in when you say if there's any complaints on traffic, dust. Including but not limited to left-hand turns from.
Yep.
Something to that effect.
Yep, and I hate to bring up another point, because we really don't want taking a left out of there, and I agree wholeheartedly with that. But if, let's just say it is Kimball, are they gonna be skirting all around the town trying to get back to their plant? I mean, in my mind, my mind, I'm running roads right now saying, okay, they can get down Depot Street and hook around and get back down, but. If they're going to Kimball, left-hand turn out is the best way to go back. So are we creating, and I don't wanna create this issue of letting them take a left out of there, but we create issues all over town. Only send them right if they are going back south.
Oh, if they're going down hard for that, that's not a bad route back to Kimball's.
No, it's just not the most direct route.
No.
I'll just throw this out, because I'm guilty of it especially, but sometimes we as boards overthink things. You know what I mean, so.
Who, you, Brian?
Including me.
Yeah, I would recommend just that language about the traffic and dust concerns, and I certainly will express the left turns as a, kind of a. Highlight, but I think that's a good remedy, because, you know, if there are concerns, this is gonna be a long process, so, I mean, if there are concerns. We certainly won't hesitate to haul them in and bring them before you.
We don't want a traffic cop out there, though, you don't think it's necessary, anybody?
No, I think it's gonna be too long of a period of time to impose that upon him.
I mean, how many trips, I mean, I guess, from what you're saying, that sounds like.
Twenty in, twenty out, yeah, having to cut.
A lot of trucks.
Yeah, but if we're doing real math, and again, to Brian's point, not wanting to go too far with it, and we're talking twenty, maybe twenty-five trucks a day. We're on tri轴s out of there at the most, I mean.
Yeah.
I would, I would say that that could easily be a good remedy if there is issues and with this condition, you know, so. If there are major issues and they still wanna take the left turn in, you know, you could easily say, you know, the remedy is fine, you have to have. An officer there, because it's causing an issue.
Perfect, good, yeah.
Yeah. Does anyone, should we make a motion?
Anyone from the public, again?
I'll open it up to the public, is anyone on the public, how many comments?
Doesn't look like it.
Motion to close the hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion, any more discussion?
Oh, we need a motion first or not? I'll make a motion, motion to grant the permit as requested with the changes that were made in the discussion.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Do we, no discussion, though? I was just asking.
So, traditionally. Yeah, motion, second, discussion, vote.
So we go ahead and wrap that one up?
Falling for the vote?
Go right call again.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Mark, good luck.
Thank you very much, I'm gonna go buy a new pickup truck.
Really big one.
Thank you.
Okay, so I've got mental note for that, motion, second, discussion, and then.
Yeah, that's Robert's Rules of Order, Brian.
I'll get you a copy, Brian, it's all right.
Post a note in front of your computer.
Yeah, that would help, um, all right, the next one, I'll hand it over to Peter.
Okay. Thanks, Brian, I appreciate it, Jim, what do we have tonight with Lakeview Estates?
It's our monthly wake-up of Sean Malone. At our last meeting, Sean and his team had provided an update that they were. Are getting close to starting construction of the drainage, it's been. to starting construction of the drainage. Um, it's been a, it's been a pretty promising uh month in terms of weather and constructions. Uh, notwithstanding the last week or so, and um, they have made quite a bit of progress. Uh, I was out there inspecting. I know our conservation agent's been out there, our DPW inspector's been out there, and our our construction monitoring agent has been out there several times reviewing the progress that's been made. Um, and I'm sure Sean can provide us with an update on where they stand today.
Yep, ha- happy to do that. Good evening all. Um, so as Jim mentioned, uh, we were able to get a good early start on the construction a little earlier than anticipated. We've had some good weather except for the last week or so. Fafford kinda doubled down on the efforts out there. They had two crews running most of the time. So happy to report that um, this is pretty much ninety percent complete. Um, I talked to Wellington, the construction manager today. They're not gonna be able to do much tomorrow with some rain, but he should finish up the grading work and the erosion control matting on the newly graded slope um on Saturday. And at that point, all the drainage infrastructure is already in, all the pipes, all the catch basins. The um, the uh, new outlet to the the basin is in, the head wall, the rip rap, everything's in. So as I said, we should be done on Saturday and then we'll commence our monitoring period to make sure that the grass and hydro seed on the slopes takes and um, we should be wrapped up here, I I would expect in a month or so. But as of, as of this Saturday, we don't expect any more construction activity.
All right, thanks, Sean. And and I'll be honest with you, I I have paid attention to what's going on down there, um, and I have seen a lot of progress. I do have a quick question, if you don't mind.
Yes.
I swung down this morning and it's it's just probably my lack of knowledge, but I noticed the main retention pond had water in it. And then you have a stone type wall with another pond with water in it. Is that part of the new design having? Can you explain that this?
Yeah, so and that was actually part of the original design. We modified it a little bit. So what it is, it's a small basin that's closest to Candlelight Drive. And that's a four bay, a sediment four bay. So the idea is that the storm water goes into that basin first. It settles, it allows some of the solids to settle out and then overflows through that stone berm into the the main detention area. So by that point, the the water's pretty cleaned out and then it will exit the pond um from that main detention area. So it's a two-stage, it's a two-stage basin.
I noticed both of them were quite full this morning. Is that due to the rain we've had for the past, I think the weatherman said nine days now we've had rain?
Yeah, yeah, and 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 I think they also had the uh outlet um plugged up a little bit just so that any sediment from the exposed soils wasn't getting out and into the lake.
Okay. If, but if it's working, why would you have it blocked?
Well, because we still have a lot of the, that that sediment four bay was just reconstructed, so we wanna make sure that, you know, there isn't any loose soils and things like that. As I said, it it's not a hundred percent complete. We're about ninety percent complete, but by Saturday, um, it should be all all wrapped up and fully operational.
And what was the the dig on Silver Lake Lane? Us, this morning that I was watching?
Uh, I think they were installing the final catch basin structure over to the um from the corner there into the basin.
Okay, because they're going right down the middle of the road.
Yeah, oh, that was, that was for the overflow pipe, the the structure for the overflow pipe. Yeah.
All right, um, any other board members gonna questions, comments? Let's open it up, yeah. Brian, you're way too quiet. What do you got?
Which Brian?
Mr. Salisbury.
Oh, thank you, thank you. So I'm happy to hear that there's progress being made and that uh, we can finally see light at the end of the tunnel, so I I think that's um, very good. I'm curious what Brian, Mr. Wright's observations are, uh, living there.
Yeah, I'm gonna get to him.
Yeah, that's my, with all the rain, I was wondering if there were any events of kind of like flooding or, and did anything get into the lake? Is that the reason you plugged? The the system for a little bit to let it, the sediments settle rather than going in the lake? Was there an instance where sediments went into the lake before you did that?
No, no, not not to my knowledge. We didn't have any uh issues in in BSC group. The town's peer review engineer has been out there a couple times, monitoring and has issued some reports. They haven't um, found any issues out there, so everything's been been going well as as far as I know.
Yeah, I will add that our our town, our engineered BSC group has uh done some inspections and provided a a lot of guidance and so far, yeah, no, no major concerns. There are some tweaks um in the field that they have suggested to Sean and his team, and I know where uh, that's that ten percent kinda gap that's not quite complete just yet, but uh other than that, yeah, they have uh, have reported back promisingly.
Glad to hear that.
Question?
Yeah, correct.
Is with all the constructions and so forth, is there any silt that will need to be cleaned out of any of the basins, of either of the basins?
Um, I don't know that uh for sure, but I am scheduled to go out there on Wednesday to kinda do a final inspection. So if I do observe anything like that, that that will be reported and and taken care of.
And I'll certainly have our team also hover over Sean and and report as well.
Yeah.
Uh, do we have any need, is that um, observing, have any concerns?
Boy, you open it up to the uh, the public, Peter, one more question if I may? Unrelated, totally off the wall right now, but there was a believed mitigation for widening of, I believe it was was either easy, either Easy Street or Douglas Drive. What's happening with that? Are we still expecting that to happen?
I could speak to that. Um, so actually, you're right, there is, there was mitigation for Easy and, I believe, Douglas for those intersections. If you actually would go into that, those neighborhoods, you'll see that the whole neighborhood's been repaved, um, and that's because um, there's been, there was some discussions with Fafford's team to uh transfer those intersection widenings to a comparable mitigation for paving. And the reason for that is uh, we successfully got a grant from the state to improve both of those intersections, along with one twenty-six from Douglas Drive all the way to the town center. Um, it's about an eight million dollar grant from the state that are gonna be starting in about a year and a half. Uh, so rather than have Fafford do it and then us rip it up, we asked for them to transfer that to something else and and that turned into a significant amount of paving that was, you know, dollar for dollar, essentially.
So the widening will not be taking place then, or or is it just?
Not by Fafford's team, but by uh, by the state.
Okay, great.
And I I believe that paving's either being done or is complete, right?
Yeah, that that is complete, and I believe the town is looking to fill in any gaps that may have been, uh, that may remain. But yeah, that that was completed last session and then, um, but we did ask for Fafford's team to come back around. There's some hydro seeding that needs to take place in in certain areas.
Okay. Anyone else try to open us to the public? Go ahead, Brian. Mr. Wright.
All right, uh, Brian Wright, ninety-nine Silver Lake Road. Well, now that Art mentioned that, yeah, I'm curious about, so Jim, do you know Northern Light Lights Way? Is that one of the ones that was ever looked at and for having any needs to be widened? Because that street always just seems is that supposed to be a one-way or a two-way? Because that one's
Yeah, it's a, it's a one-way road, but uh, it doesn't make a lick of sense for it to be a one-way road. Um, I assume, um, and actually, I I know because I went back to the minutes once I saw the road constructed and tried to see what, why this is here. You know, based on concerns from the neighbors and Art, you might remember it, um, based on the concerns from the neighbors, uh, as a cut through neighborhood, the board asked for it to be one-way. Um, there isn't any signage to date uh of it as a one-way. You know, I'm I'm hesitant to push for a one-way there. Uh, all that does is create just them to go the loop of Candlelight instead of just going straight.
Well, I could tell you, everyone, it's used as a two-way all the time. I think everyone, myself included, everyone just goes straight through there as opposed to as a cut through.
And I I would say that proves that we're designing our roads too wide. It works just fine, uh, except for honestly, there is a turning radius issue.
Kinda have to, when we do it, we notice that it's like you do have a hesitation, a little pause when a car is coming to be like, we'll let you kinda go first.
You you drive more safely in a narrow road.
And uh, we will have the safety officer addressing you going down a one-way road first thing. I know, in all seriousness, um, what have you seen being a resident down there? I mean, any major issues? Uh, things feeling better?
No, it it definitely does. It seems like they're, it's it's looking good. Um, it's just kinda that same kinda, you know, deja vu type of thing or like a Groundhog's Day where you're kinda like, okay, it looks good, like hopefully it functions well. There hasn't been any issues, though. So I guess my biggest concerns would be the um keeping an eye out on the hydro seeding, because the weather's been good, but to make sure that they continue to water it so that it sticks. Because that's definitely been an issue in the past. The other question I would have is, um, so Sean, how far ahead of schedule are they? Because it definitely seems like they moved really fast.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, and uh, we're probably about uh, three weeks ahead, two or three weeks ahead of schedule.
So the one concern I would have with that is in the past, Fafford has a typical thing of where he does nothing until he's, his back's against the wall and then he sends out these guys to crank it out. So my concern again goes to, I guess what I've said before is that trusting the um, the town's kinda peer reviewer or people on the ground to make sure they're installing stuff right, because they, I think Fafford is notorious for just sending a couple guys out of a picture pickup truck or whatever, who knows, to throw the stuff in there. And in the the past redesign, they, you know, didn't follow the asbills, or they did, I mean, not the asbills, but they didn't follow the design for a lot of these things and inverts were off, elevations were off. So that's, that's my ongoing concern is that it's like, okay, it's my initial thing was like, they're moving fast, but then I'm like, are they going too fast? That it's like, and you know, that they just crank it out, that it's, you know, better to have it done right than having them just crank it out as fast as possible so they can skip onto the next thing and start building.
I I think Sean, you you had mentioned that they committed two complete crews to the project, so just one, that's why you were ahead of schedule?
Yeah, that's right. And and just real quick to address um, Brian's uh comment a little bit. As opposed to the work that was done a year or two ago, there's a new construction manager at Fafford who's dealing with this and in in my opinion is um doing a good job on on staying on top of these things and and following the plan versus previous people didn't necessarily do it, as as Brian pointed out, so um, I think there's been a little bit of a uh, an improvement operationally there as well, which is, which has helped with this project in where we are now.
Yeah, it's because it's, I think, again, it seems like everything's great. It's just the um I guess, just hoping, and it looks like it is being done right this time. I would just say, I guess to the board, just to whatever you decide tonight, it's good to at least hold something that you have some kind of you know, just to, just to be wary about still leaving, that it's not all completely done, because I know the hydro seeding that in the past has always been an issue. So I just wanna, it looks like they're at that ninety percent, but the big unknown is um how it's, you know, all the the regrading and about where there's steeper slope, is that really gonna hold again? Are we gonna have washout issues like previously? So I guess that would be my only concern, to make sure that everything really takes root and that the finished grade is really all set, set and done. Because now it's kinda more the maintenance. It's more about the making sure it's watered and making sure that all the grade establishes itself.
So I I actually, Sean, can I ask a quick question? I mean, right now, you you've got it plugged. What what's the intended time to unplug it and let's see the system work?
Well, and 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 plug may be the wrong word and and I'll take a look at it Wednesday, but oftentimes they put, you know, some filter fabric over it, so it it would slow the drain of it. But but it would still go down. Um, but I I would suspect, I'll 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 have a better understanding when I get out there Wednesday and see things, but I I would suspect that um after this weekend, after they finish all the matting on the hill, um, to prevent that erosion and and the be able to keep the hydro seed on there, we'll be able to take all that stuff off.
Well, I I'm just, as I'm looking to, I'm supposed to get one heck of a rain rainy day on Monday. Really be nice to have any functioning.
Yep, yep, and that's uh, that was Wellington's uh point when we spoke today, is that he wants to be able to get all that slope, all that exposed soil, um, hydro seeded and matted, so it's covered. Um, which is something that wasn't done before, so that'll, that'll certainly um, help from past experiences.
Yeah, because I'll just say from the, I mean, everyone who's been on the board through all this, but previously, I don't know, I mean, I'm sure Brian Salisbury and Art and I don't know, Peter was, yeah, you 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 were around, I think, from the last iteration, but remember how long they talked about with the germination, and that was months on months on months. So that's my only thing I would caution about. Because they had that
They're putting down seed on top of stone storms.
Yeah, but last time it was like, oh, they they hydro seeded it, and then it was like months on months on months before finally.
Well, Sean mentioned that they're, well, Sean mentioned that they're putting the matting over it, so that should, that should help it a lot.
Yeah, it seems like they're doing it right this time. I just, yeah, again, I mean, I just, it'd be great to have something you could hold to, to just see like, okay, the next month or whatever, that it's really starting to grow in.
Okay. So Jim, what exactly we face here outside with?
Yep, so it's our typical extension, uh, but also we're talking about um a recommendation of additional building permits being released to the building inspector. I talked with Tim earlier today. He has granted those eighteen that the the board has allowed for to date, uh, so the full eighteen have been handed out. Um, and there's twenty-two that remain. Uh, I will note as well, if the board is considering granting some additional building permits, if we could at least uh, maybe stipulate uh, one or two or however, what a, a good percentage uh, that the affordables be included in that. The uh, with twenty-two remaining, I think we still have something like ten affordables remaining to be constructed. So that we don't want it to be the last thing that's that's being built.
And 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 I'm sorry, uh, just to to address that point just real quick, Jim, I I did have that conversation with Fafford a little bit. And that is something that they're doing. I think it's for every five units, they have to do one affordable, so that's kinda been in the mix, I believe.
Yeah, it's good if it is in the mix now. It wasn't in the past, because we just got the monitoring report and it's uh, the percentage just isn't lining up.
Yeah, well, if you got twenty-two left and and ten left that need to be affordable, that math doesn't work.
There's ten left.
Yeah. Sean, of of the eighteen permits you currently have, how many foundations have been dug?
I think all eighteen of those.
I I did take note that quite a few were being worked on.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll put up to the board what your thoughts are here. I I certainly have one myself, but anyone have any comments, thoughts on more building permits?
Yeah, if I may, I'm really happy with the the percentage they did so quickly when they were, you know, when Fafford really wants to get things done, seems like it gets done quicker than even expected. Um, I'm glad that we have boots on the ground and the inspection reports have been coming in good. And of course, you know, I'm not, I know the board, the rest of the members have dealt with this project for a lot longer than I have, but um hearing what Brian White said, I agree that we can't give too much leeway at this point, uh, pending seeing the final result, so I'm I'm good with the usually limiting, um, probably perhaps putting more affordables under today's decision, but I'd like to hear what decision, but I'd like to hear what the rest of the board has to say in terms of the number of units.
So it's just going by the numbers, every other house should be affordable.
So I didn't confirm 10, but I'm pretty certain it's pretty close. So it might be, you know, eight, nine, or 10, but it's definitely a high number that we were concerned of. So it would be something close to that.
So if I'll throw my two cents at this point, yeah, no, we definitely got to hold the permits back until this is proven that this works, it's up and running, and everyone feels nice and comfy. I would be of the opinion to release 10, but five of them be affordable. And that's just my opinion, and I'm open to discussion with any board member that has anything better or worse to say.
Would agree with that, Peter. The only thing that I might add, because we're not sure on how many affordables are left, maybe we could make it four affordables instead of five, but I'm finding either way.
Mr. Salisbury, you're being quiet over there.
I was just curious, Sean, does that work for Fafford? If there was some mix of affordables and?
It has to.
I, yeah, no, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Yeah, I think I could, I think five and five, however they want to stagger it, every other one, or however that works.
I personally think, because we've been behind the eight ball with them, that definitely has to be a push at this release.
All right, I agree.
I agree.
Jim?
Yeah, oh, Tim, hey.
How you doing? So there's eight affordables, there's only eight left.
Only eight left, okay. So, you know, I look at, do half of them, do six and four. Let's get a commitment to get these affordables built.
Yeah, let's get five, five and five.
You still want to go five and five, like even numbers, don't you?
Five and five, because we want to make sure they're done before the project's done. You know what I mean? If we have any input and Sean is agreeable to it, five and five, I think is a good thing for the town.
It'd be nice to see the affordables all done before the rest of them are done.
Yeah, because then there's no incentive to finish.
And what the project's based on is affordable housing.
Right.
So I'm in with the five and five.
So would it be a recommendation to continue and extend to June 3rd with a recommendation to release 10 building permits, five of them being affordable?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor? You can take a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Just for the future, move second.
Any discussion before we vote?
No, thank you.
I'll call a vote, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So passes.
All right, thank you all, have a good night, and we'll see you in a month.
Appreciate your good work, Sean, thank you.
Thank you.
It's looking much better.
All right, good to hear. Thank you.
All right, cool. Nice job, Peter.
Except at the end. We're gonna write up at the end.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda, the Curtis Apartments Comprehensive Permit Insubstantial Modification Request. Jim, is this, do I motion? Is this a new hearing, or is this, could you give?
No, so this is, this is just a general business item. So what's going on here is the Curtis Apartments is gearing up, you know, going down our checklist in our decision, and one of them is a regulatory agreement. So this is, honestly, this is an administrative action, and through a 40B comprehensive permit, it's much similar to what the planning board does as a minor modification, so it doesn't really need a hearing per se. And so what the request is here, and it actually stems from our request, the town's request, is I believe we provided you with an email from Shirin Everett, who's our, one of our town council. In reviewing the decision, again, as we're nearing construction, she noted that Condition Four has a different framework than she would have preferred, and she requested that if the board is okay with it, and the applicant's okay, whether the developer's okay with it, then we would modify this regulatory agreement framework. And so basically, what's going on here is how we have it phrased in the decision is a regulatory agreement is in place with the applicant, and that regulatory agreement spells out kind of the nuts and bolts for how the affordables are provided and all that, and monitored, et cetera. And so the developer has an agreement with the town, and then the developer has an agreement with DHCD, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development, which is the oversight from the state. How KP Law, our town council, has liked to do this for other communities and for some time now, is kind of bring it all together, because the state has a lot of concerns, and they have a lot of teeth in it, and we want to make sure that we're going kind of side by side with them. So this is just a tripartite agreement, really, just, you know, the town, DHCD, and the developer, all in one whole agreement. And they've already had a lot of good discussions, and DHCD and town council have really come to terms already. They just want to make sure that we can, the board is okay with it to making this, what's called an insubstantial modification to Condition Four.
What's the condition?
So the condition is simply the regulatory agreement. So it's the, that, right now it spells out that the town will have a regulatory agreement with the developer, and then the HCD will have a regulatory agreement with the developer. And when there's conflicts, they would work those out. But what they, what town council would prefer it to say is that the town, the HCD, and the developer will have a regulatory agreement, so that it's one document essentially, as opposed to the two potentially conflicting documents.
Okay, so we need some sort of motion, Jim?
Yeah, if you're okay with this modification, it's just I moved to grant the insubstantial modification to Condition Four.
So moved.
Discussion.
Okay, discussion?
May have, Ryan.
I feel like it's just skipping a step, right? It's like trying not to double the work, it's just putting them both together and having one report rather than two. Is there any repercussion or any liability?
Town council recommends it. Yeah, this stems from town council recommending, they think it's less, less concern.
Okay, if Brian's good with it, I'm good with it.
Yeah. Motion's on the table and seconded, right?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. That passes, so the last item is minutes.
I just have one thing that Peter was the one that was chairing the meeting for Silver Lake and not I.
You don't want to take credit for that?
Peter deserves all the credit.
I got it.
All right, thank you. Motion accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
Discussion?
Now you're just showing off.
I'm gonna do it every time.
You know, interesting point of order, though, when someone moves to adjourn the meeting, there is no discussion.
Oh, see, now I need another post-it.
Look it up.
It doesn't, and it also doesn't need a second, if I'm correct.
Oh, you need a second.
You sure?
Well, then anybody can just get up and say, meeting's done.
Then you have to vote on it.
Well, means done.
We gotta vote on this one first.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all those opposed, passes.
Motion adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, dude.
Thanks, you appreciate.